Freddie Jones.
Yep.
Danielle, Danny.
It's not gonna work if he goes out so often or whatever.
But it was okay.
He's trying.
Oh, she said it was his turn.
He's trying.
We'll go ahead and call this special meeting to order Friday, February the 16th, 5:30 PM. We'll have a pledge allegiance in a moment of silence and we'll need to approve the agenda. If you all would please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. You all be seated. There's under general business, section A, we have two items. We need approval of the agenda as presented.
Say it.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Danielle, you good? Danny. First, be Michael Carter for consideration for their interlocal agreement with the town of Sparta. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The purpose of today's meeting, as I mentioned once before, was to expedite the process with the town to allow for the $15 million award that they received for their wastewater treatment plant to move forward. And as I had mentioned, the longer that we wait to execute the agreement, the money lays within the state's coffers as opposed to getting it on the quick track to come to the town. And as a reminder, through a series of bill writings, although the town requested this money, this money does ultimately come to the county because of the way the bill was written. So what you have before you is an agreement, an interlocal agreement between the town and the county that identifies how this will happen. And I trust each member has had the opportunity to read it. If you'd like, I can hit the highlights of it if you need those.
Please.
Well, we'll start with paragraph one. Under services, the town agrees to expand all the directed funds, including the interest, which is why it's important to act on this as quickly as possible because the interest earned off of this project can also be used for this project. So we want to ensure that that interest money is used here as opposed to someone else. And that's basically the highlight of paragraph one. Paragraph two, it has a timeframe of July 1 of '23 until June of '26. As we all know, we're almost eight months into the July 1 of '23 period. So again, reasoning for expediting. Second page talks about at the top, the town must be expanded or encumbered no later than June 30 of 2026. So they've got to get, they've got to get going. The third paragraph, basically, the town shall operate as an independent contractor. Down a little deeper in that, the town is fully responsible for the payment of any and all taxes arising from the payment of monies under this agreement. Going a little further, the town has no authority to enter into contracts or agreements on behalf of the county. The next one is fairly important. The county shall not be liable to the town for any expenses paid or incurred by the town unless agreed in writing. And the final on paragraph three, as the town shall supply at its sole expense all equipment, tools, materials, and supplies required to provide the services. Paragraph four, beginning April 24, and this is where we worked out some of the understandings. Quarterly, as identified in section four, the town shall report to the county and to the North Carolina Department of Public Safety on the use of any directed grant funds until all funds are expended and accounted for. The town shall also comply with any reporting requirements set forth by the state of North Carolina, and failure to do so basically constitutes a breach of the agreement. Paragraph five, it talks about records and audit. The town agrees it will supply such records and all the pertinent information. The town shall maintain a written accounting and documentation of all its receipts and disbursements. The county reserves the right to require a certified audit pertaining to the use of those funds. The town shall furnish to the county a copy of its audit report performed by CPA as soon as possible as it becomes available. And further, the town agrees to pay any and all expenses incurred by the county for required audit services performed by CPA, which is directly attributed to funds covered by this agreement, which is what I had mentioned at your previous meeting also. Paragraph six, the county may terminate this agreement for any violation thereof by the town, and it lists those, which I will not go into detail. Paragraph seven, pretty important, the town agrees to indemnify, defend, and hold the county harmless from all and any claims, expenses, cost or liabilities. Paragraph eight is just for the notices, who they go to for both respective town and county. Nine is a waiver. Ten is a governing law. Eleven is the survival provisions. Twelve, modification, we've talked about these on a repeated basis. This agreement may only be modified in writing and signed by both the town and county manager or other authorized county official. Thirteen is miscellaneous. The last page, which is page four, which I think is very important and a great sentence to end with. This agreement is intended for the benefit of the county and the town. So, and I'll defer to Heather for her legal purview of it at this time.
On any questions? Michelle, Greg? I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, but I was wondering if Heather needs to be a signatory.
We've agreed that with contracts that at the bottom, we would add the review, that line saying that I've reviewed it. And that's the only thing. I've looked at the agreement and the document, so I don't see any issues with it, and that is something that we all agreed that we would add, so that can be added to the last page.
Well, I've just always been under the understanding that any legal document you would initial. Just, I think that's just good business. The other question is, how does this affect our budget? How does it show up coming through the county?
The way that I understand it is, once the agreements are executed and the process begins, there is a mechanism that the town indicated to us that they were going to ask for either a lump sum or, for whatever reason, the state identified nine increments of payment. I recommended a lump sum, and I recommended that to hopefully occur in this budget year because it would be a much cleaner all around if we did not have to span two budget cycles, two audits, and to create those additional costs in two cycles as opposed to one. I have not heard back yet if that is a possibility, but we are hoping that is how it would happen, is in a lump sum in the remaining four months, three and a half months of this fiscal year. So we would do a budget amendment if that happened, in this amount, create a fund in and out. It would be under one audit, much simpler process.
Just to be sure I understand, let's take for example our budgets, 20 million. If this 15 does come in between now and before the end of July, June, our budget numbers may reflect 35 million?
Using that $20 million example, yes. But it would be an amended version as opposed to an adopted version if you have to do it over the next fiscal year.
You know, I just want the public to understand that we're not increasing our county budget to run the government by whatever number it happens to be. Because I know that during this political mudsling that's going on right now, some of these people may turn around and try to use this as negative information to the general public.
This money is no different than any of the ARPA funds the county has received, the COVID money. It would be no different in any of the schools' money and upcoming budget cycles. You know, although the bottom line increases, these funds are specified. You can't just flip them here, flip them there. They're in special funds. That's how they have to be expanded and dispersed.
And the amount of work that is going to cause our finance department is minimal, sort of, or?
You know, I don't have a scale, but I mean, there's going to be some work involved in some of it, but it's not anything. And April and I have talked about it, and probably good I'm on the microphone and she's not, but I don't see it being anything that is backbreaking to that department.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions?
My questions were answered.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Anything else on that?
Asking for consideration by the board.
We need a vote tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
So moved.
A motion and a second on the agreement with the town. And Danielle, you ready? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries 4-0. I would like to mention Timmy's on vacation, but he'll be back sometime next week, but that's why he's not here. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Next item has a little something to do with the county. Probably the biggest investment that's ever hit this county. And last week, I believe we had a meeting with the Board of Education, or was it Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday. With the Board of Education and their architect, engineer, they answered a lot of questions. But Timmy and I were at that meeting along with April and Mr. Carter, and I think all of us felt that the rest of the board needs to be brought up to speed on what this project entails. It's quite impressive, but it's also quite complicated. And with that being said, Mr. Carter, anything, or we'll just turn it right over to Superintendent Weaver. Rup?
All right. And I brought some sidekicks.
I saw that.
Actually, I'm supposed to be in Greensboro tonight. We have four wrestlers, but I'm going to go down tomorrow. My understanding, we have two that still in and two that lost out in first round. But anyway, I felt that it was very important for all of us to be here. I want to say thank you for letting us come and share the information, and we're super excited about our possibilities of the future because our children definitely deserve this. If we don't do it now, we never will. A lot of time and effort has gone into this. This is a drawing of the future of Allegheny High School. I'm sure that you are aware that we have received. We have received the $47.5 million. It is going to take more than that to build. Actually, I think our architect said it's going to be $350 a square foot to build, or 325 to 350 if that's correct. So he did mention that cost has gone down just a little, but we all know things fluctuate, go up and down. So the grant, the second round of Capital Needs Grant opened up January the 8th, and it closes June the 30th. We are applying, in the middle of, as a team, writing the grant for 12 more million additional dollars. And hopefully, our architect will have plans completed soon. We are about at 98.5% of completion of drafts being ready to send off so we can get some quotes on the cost of what it's going to be. And Sid, do you want to talk about kind of where things are? And if all goes well in meeting with Dr. Catherine Truitt, we thought that we would probably get this money in September if receiving the grant, but after speaking with her, legislators want the money to be used to quickly get buildings built. If it's not, they would take the money and reappropriate it somewhere else to another school system to get things because they don't want it sitting there. And with that being said, if we get this money, we would love to start possibly this spring. If we break ground before the grant is announced, we can't apply for the 12 million. So that's why we're kind of sitting back and nothing's happening at this time. So Sid, do you have any questions for us?
Just before we get too deep into it, there's two different fundings. One is the 47 million, the other is the 12 million. Help me out. The 47 million, we cannot, you cannot purchase desks, chairs, trash cans, whatever. The 12 million, you can use that to purchase those items?
In my understanding of the first round, it does state in the paper that I have that we could not buy furniture. Ms. Hamm reached out and asked, I guess I am assuming that the second round, but I have not read anything in the second about furniture. Have you?
No, no, not yet.
So.
It flopped. The first round is where it identifies the ability to. The second round does not indicate that.
Yes, the first round said no.
There's a discrepancy there somewhere.
Between the two, someplace you can purchase furniture, or can't you?
Everything that I have seen is saying no, but Ms. Hamm reached out and has an email from someone at DPI that states that we can. So I'm, you know, leaning more toward not, but if somebody from DPI tells Ms. Hamm that we can, then, you know, we're going to keep that and hopefully be able to use that. I met with Catherine Truitt one-on-one, and, you know, she just said if we could have support, a letter from our county commissioners and county manager showing that you are invested in us and it is a collaboration, and what can your community offer? They said they just didn't want the state to hand over money and be no other support. So we needed something to show county support in order for us, it's a rubric, in order for us to get the 12 million dollars.
And that's what we voted on?
Yes, sir. And I have your letter, and it will be submitted with the grant. Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me on your timeline a little bit. You said that it won't be awarded, the extra 12 million, until June, after June 30th?
We have until June the 30th, and originally, that's kind of, we thought that it would be awarded in September, but legislators are wanting the money to be released. So they are already releasing money now. So they're wanting us to break ground and start spending immediately. So the sooner we can get things rolling a little bit faster, you know, Mr. Baker said that we probably, you know, looking to put things out to bid April 1, and that may be pushing it just a little, but, you know, we do hope to break ground maybe toward a later end of spring, maybe first of summer is our goal if we can get things. The plans have to be approved by DPI, so there's little things that's going to hold us up in the timeline.
But my understanding, they do not have to be approved by DPI before it goes to bid. It can go to bid, and then if they make changes, addendums will be made to the final plan. That'll help speed it up a little bit.
And it will take the 12 million dollars, we believe, to complete it. Any other questions?
Right now?
Okay.
Got plenty, but not right now.
How much of the old high school still going to be left?
Old gym, it stays, and what we call the new building, it stays. So basically, the ag department, it'll be gone, and the core of the main building will be gone.
Another ag department on the back?
Yes, sir. That two-story building you see right there, that's the CTE wing. And it's, it's nice. It's, our kids, our kids are going to be surprised what'll be offered to them.
We'll have an all-mo, yeah, or ag, or all of our CT programs will be in that area.
It's state-of-the-art. I mean, it's, the one we toured at Montgomery County was, it had a college feel to it, and it was just, it was just unbelievable.
And this will be done in phases? Okay, I guess stay at hand point. All right.
You need to point.
Well, it's hard. It will be done in phases. Currently, the parking lot, that will be phase one. We'll be building in this section here. Once it's completed, then students will be moved into here, and then we'll be tearing this down and moving in phases. So projected, Mr. Baker said two and a half to three years. I'm guessing three, so.
Do we have the utility plan? Can you put it up?
Here, Sid.
Need a microwave.
Please stay close to the microphone.
Sorry. Okay. Right here is Trojan Avenue. Road Street's right here. The first thing that has to be done is the utility work, and we all talked about that the other night, but I've got a little information sent in. Water and sewer currently right now comes from Maple Street and comes right through here. It actually splits the buildings and then comes down this back street. So in order to build the new building, this will have to be rerouted and down. I called the civil engineer. I said, just give me a rough estimate of what it would take to relocate those lines. And he called me back in a little while, and he said, a rough estimate, a half a million. He says that does not include the paving of the road back. You know, that's just ditch and pipe work. And so that's an expense that typically does not fall into the construction expense. So we hope to have some future conversations with Mr. Wilmouth and the town and talk to them about some type of support in some way on this part of the project. Because this has to be done first. And as Ms. Weaver's talking about timing, this part is critical. We really need, we really need plans out for bid in April. We need to know who our contractor is before school lets out, and this work needs to be completed during the summer for time-wise. We've got a lot going on. I mean, there's Lions Club, Davis Field, a lot of stuff that is going to be going on that we need that done without school being in session. It's just going to be a lot easier.
Now, while that's being done, though, there will still be access to Davis Field.
Yes, sir.
And the Lions Club.
Yeah, it'll be.
They'll keep one lane.
There'll be one lane open at all times, and we'll have to stop at the little guy holding the sign and all that for a while, but we can get through.
Lions Club's already been calling and asking.
It's going to be, it's going to be a headache for a lot, a lot of us, but if we can get through it, it's, it'd be well worth it. But I just, I just kind of wanted to point that out because that was kind of a good topic that we talked about the other night, and we really didn't have any price figures on that. And like I said, that's a rough estimate. I'd say it's very close. But that is something that we'll have to deal with.
Doesn't count repair the road?
No, sir. Yep, that's it. And part of that was just paved this summer, so, yeah.
But the town needs to, because Maple Street is next to it.
Jason, you know. Jason is on the school board, but he's also a contractor, and I think that's a big plus, you know, especially for this building project, is being able to use some of his expertise.
Where it connects to Maple, where it connects to Maple Street, I mean, this is going to be a major town issue, too. I mean, we could stop it at Road Street and us just connect back, but the town's going to have to come in with us so they can get Maple Street back down to it. So it's something that's going to have to, I'm like Sid, it's got to be done this summer. It's going to affect rec, it's going to affect a lot of stuff. So the quicker we can get it done, the better off we'll be.
And the popping is very old.
Yeah. We've replaced somewhere next to the old gym, I guess it was last week, and believe it or not, it was terracotta. So, yeah, it's, it's time. Any questions on any of that?
Mr. Carter?
I have one. Where would the funding come from for that line relocation and resurfacing?
Well, as it stands right now, we wouldn't have any other choice but to add it to the cost of the construction. So that's a half a million that's going to come out of our building construction money.
For the installation?
Yes, sir.
For the resurfacing?
No. There's some more slides. I don't know how much you guys want to see, but.
Go on.
All right. Can you go to?
These commissioners haven't really seen the details, and that's, I think, important for them.
There should be like a first floor plan, I think. Yes, basement. Okay. That, I believe, looks different that far away, don't it?
Can't see.
I can't read it either. I'm thinking that's the, that should be the old gym, the basement of the old gym. And if we scroll down, this will be the first floor of the new addition. Yep. Yep. Yep, right there is the entrance, the main foyer. Okay, let's go to the next one. Okay.
How many new classrooms are you going to build?
I've not counted them. I've not counted them.
I think it's 21 coming to 4.
21, okay.
And then I think it's-
Yeah, this is good right here. This is the existing, what we call the old gym. This will be the new gym. There's a hallway here that comes over and connects to the locker rooms, bathrooms. And then as you start down this hallway, this is your CTE, starting into your CTE wing. And this whole campus, you never have to leave the building to get to another building. It's not like, you know, now we leave buildings to go to buildings and it's just in and out all day long.
It's safe.
It's very safe. Yep.
Is the new gym floor the same size as the old gym floor?
They have different sizes. You know, you've got high school length, you've got college length. And the gym itself is gonna seat more people, but-
Can you get this one cleared? Cause it gives our seat and everything.
It does. The new, the old gym is like 850 and the new one is around a thousand and something. Yeah.
And the height, we talked about it for volleyball?
Oh, yeah.
It'll be regulation now.
It will. Yeah.
And it's gonna be, it'll be a regulation floor?
Yeah.
For basketball.
Mm-hmm.
Both gyms we have are smaller.
It'll have to be regulation high school basketball court. I mean, that's just, it has to be.
I think we also asked about it, is it a floating floor?
It is. It's a maple, maple floor and it does float. All, all the gym floors now are all floating floors.
Our original drawing, we had 1,400 for lockers and we cut it back to 1,000 and shrunk the seat. Which I don't know is a great thing with the last two or three events we've had, but.
It does set a few hundred more than what, what we're accustomed to. Yeah. This will be nice. This is the entrance into the new gym. Have a good foyer area there. This is all concession stand with bathrooms on each, each side. Concession stands is something that we've battled for years, never having the right amount of room and, and just not the right setup. It's just-
And being in compliance with our head inspectors.
Yeah, that's always a ongoing battle.
Do you still have the old gym?
Or the new gym?
Yes, that's gonna be considered like an auxiliary. We're gonna use it. Some of the EC kids are using it now. And it'll, it'll have a little different purpose now. Any questions on that?
You know, just looking at the drawing, this floor just looks bigger, you know, compared to the old-
It does. It does. I don't think it actually gives measurements.
It gives 7,000 square feet in this area.
Mm-hmm.
This here's about 5,600.
Okay.
So it's about 2,000 square feet.
If I had to guess, this court is probably about the same size as the one, what we call the new gym now. It would be real close to that one. Cause the old one, the old gym is, it's a smaller court.
It's like the space, not necessarily the court, but the, the space around the court-
Yeah.
Probably makes up that difference.
And see, there's a big push now with having more baseline room and stuff with accidents and so on. So.
And everything's air conditioned throughout?
Yes, sir.
Actually throughout the whole school.
You can't build a building without air conditioning nowadays. Any questions on any of that?
Where's the one with the window looking out?
It should be coming. If you wanna go to the next one, will?
The second floor or the other?
Yeah, that'd be good.
I've got some hallways that look like-
Yeah, that's kind of the layout of the whole thing. Yeah. Scroll down just a little bit and I'll show the, the other way, I'm sorry. Right there. This is the, what we talked about, this is about as far as we could see on that other one. This is the locker rooms, bathrooms for the gym. Here starts our CTE wing, comes down and turns. Auto mechanics is here. You've got ag, welding, all in these areas. These are all shop, shop areas with the classrooms right behind them.
And above, they have an area you can look through down into the-
Mm-hmm.
Observation.
Observation. Kinda like a catwalk type thing.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. This will be all enclosed. This is the backside of the ag, ag part. This is, this will be nice because with the security issues and stuff, we really, if we go outside, we're just outside. I mean, when, there's no, there's no stopping people from driving up or anything like a now with what we've got. Now, they're inside, if they're outside, they're inside a closed fence and gate. Plenty of room to do their outside stuff.
That's what backs up to the softball field.
It is. Right there is the softball field. They will be a retaining wall that comes right through here. Kinda ends there and it kinda comes back over into here some. But right in here, it's like 20 feet, 20 feet tall. So it's, be a pretty good, pretty good And there's gonna be a ton of dirt come out of there, tremendous amount of dirt. And hopefully here local, we find a place for it. Different things.
If the rig gets done like the ball fields and y'all been talking about, that dirt could be easy to slide right over.
Yep. Okay, will you scroll down please? Uh, there we go. All right, right here, this again is the foyer area where it comes in. You got your office spaces here. Goes back into, bands back in this corner. This is our cafeteria right here.
That gonna be one of the first things you build or?
The cafeteria will be included with the first phase. That way, we have everything we need when we transfer the students and start tearing down the section. Yeah, have to have a cafeteria with it.
Drainage problems right now?
We do, we have had, yeah. It's a constant battle now. Rerouting and opening up new drains and putting in new drains and-
Almost everything on old cafeterias collapsing.
It is. It's, it's nearly, really not in good shape. But as you come down through here, this is all classrooms. All that is classrooms. I think it's, I don't know if it's math, English. Yeah, core stuff, I was thinking. And this is the, what we call the new building now. There will be a basement area that we can access on this end. And it goes back nearly to about right in here somewhere. And that'll house some air handlers and stuff. And but there'll be a lot of storage, which is needed. We, we have nowhere to store anything. So we look forward to that space. But it'll be accessed right here.
I think one thing that I liked that the architect talked about was the maintenance, the outside maintenance.
Oh, yeah.
Especially on the brick.
Mm-hmm.
If you could go through that, cause I know that the old gym and even it's part of school, the face of some of those bricks for years has been falling off. And the reason why, why it's fallen off.
Yeah. And what he was talking about is several years ago, if you all remember, we wrapped the core of the building in metal. And we did that because the brick facings, about a quarter inch of it was just shelling off. I mean, it was just, every winter is just, just kept shelling off. And what Randy was telling us is years ago, they used to dip those brick with a, like a waterproof substance. And then, you know, it was supposed to be the newest and greatest thing and last forever, but it didn't, it didn't turn out that way.
The water go through the joint and get behind it and pop it.
Yeah. And it popped it right off. So, you know, brick's been redesigned now and that's not an issue. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's gonna be very, should be very low maintenance on the outside of the building.
It's basically metal and brick.
That's it.
And the roofs have a small pitch, though they're not flat roof.
Yeah.
There's a pitch, so the water just won't sit.
Yeah.
About the parking spaces compared to what you have now?
Okay.
What you're gonna wind up with?
This one here, there's one here and then there's one on the backside, kinda where the gym entrance is. I've seen numbers, there's 100 places here and there's 100 on the backside. Uh, right there. With the way they're gonna go into the new CTE area, that opens up more room. So we can get more parking on the backside. I was talking to Officer Carrier yesterday and he says we have somewhere around 150 student drivers. So we're not overrun with parking, but we should be, should be sufficient. Any other questions on that?
On anything?
No.
Cat's, I meant the third-
That is. Yeah. That's the, the little catwalk that you can walk down and look, actually look over into the shop areas where they're, where they're working. And it'd be great if we have people that wanna come in and see the trades and stuff and-
Local businesses and local people.
Yeah. It's, 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 it's gonna be nice.
And not just your class.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep. Should be, see what the next one is. Maybe we have got through.
What's some color ones?
There should be, yeah, like the colored where it shows the entrance. See if you, there we go. If you come through the front doors and turn around and look back out, that's kinda what, what it's gonna look like. You have, the media center is here. This is-
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria. No, no, that's, it's a common area. Yeah, the cafeteria'd be done on this But got the logo and lots of glass in the front there. Areas if, when you come in, when you first come in. Office administration here. These doors will lead you into the school. All this will be buzz in, buzz outdoors. You can get here, but that's as far as you can go without being buzzed in to these other parts.
Bulletproof glass?
No, sir. That was brought up Monday night. And evidently, the price of bulletproof glass is through the roof. Architect and his words says it's not feasible.
Same problem at Judge Doughton's courtroom. And the way they got around that, they're sliding doors that can come over and close off those windows. Those doors are steel.
Okay.
And bullet.
Okay.
Correct measure.
We will have metal detectors. They've just got, that will be there just yet.
If they come in, the door shooting-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does no good.
It was mentioned, they make some 3M film that goes over the windows and that way, cause these are all tempered glass and tempered glass just shatters. And the film kinda holds it together and it's a little harder to get through. But it's still, it's just slowing you up a little bit. It's not-
Also blast proof. That's what the embassy's on to now.
Mm-hmm.
New buildings on the military basis. Once they come in through the glass doors, then these doors are all locked.
Yes.
And they have to be buzzed to be open. There's no stairs or anything that goes to the second floor.
No, sir.
So they're contained in that lobby area.
Actually, the visitors will come here and then they'll come through the administration and then back into the building on the backside. This is for students in and out, access in the mornings and evenings. It's what that's really for.
Main entrance area.
And not even sure, I mean, I know it shows them doors looking like glass where you go in. I'm not sure exactly what's on there.
No, I'm, I'm not sure either. Yeah. It should be solid core doors.
You might shoot you right through into the, but you couldn't shoot on through, if that makes sense.
I had plenty of video surveillance and-
Yes, sir. Yeah. I think right now at the high school, we have 52 cameras. We talked about that the other day. Have 52 now and I would imagine that number will increase a little bit.
Number is, doesn't impress me who's monitoring them.
That's right.
Ran into that problem.
Yeah.
Whenever we had our vandalism down at Veterans Park, lo and behold, nobody's looking.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of times there for to go back and look and see why.
Yeah. After the fact is what-
But it's, it's over with then.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
I think that was probably all of them.
It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, it's gonna be huge. Biggest thing that's hit Allegheny in a long time?
The only comment that I had, I mean, this is just what I hear from other people. And, I mean, we definitely, our kids deserve a top notch school. You know, if, if it is gonna cost more than the almost $60 million, is there any way that we could condense a few things or take out some of the fancier glass features or things like that to help bring it into budget? Because-
Well, you know, if, if prices do come in over budget, then, you know, we have to sit down and rethink, no doubt. We want this for our kids. It's, I think it's the best that we could possibly give them. And we just hope and pray that the prices are in our budget.
I mean, like taking out the glass enters and stuff like that, I don't know that that's a major change.
Mm-hmm.
It's like there's something, it could be glass brick.
To really, to really knock it down price wise, you have to, you have to get rid of square footage.
And what we build is, is kinda to the minimum of what DPI's regulations with the amount of kids we have.
And as you look at the CTE wing, I mean, that's, that's, that's bigger than what we have now. But that is the one area that our county and our country is struggling in is trades. And-
I feel pretty good is if your timeline's three years to get it built. Now, if it was five, I'd be worried. Cause we've got five years potential inflation.
Yes.
I, well, our architect thinks that 60 will do it. He feels comfortable with it.
And he, and he actually said some of the schools was coming in at 325. And I really hope that's what it is. If it is, we're golden. We're, we're gonna be great shape. So.
But nobody'll know till-
So you're asking-
Nobody knows, do we know?
It's just a bid. I just, it's just horrible.
Life expectancy of, of this renovation, new ports and the old port, 50?
He said 100 years.
He said-
On the new stuff, yes.
I mean, they still gonna be maintenance no matter, on anything, one year after, there's still maintenance.
If you've got a building, there's maintenance. But that old building was, what, 50, 60 years? So.
56. It was opened the year I graduated. They started on it.
So there's no reason this building shouldn't do that if not way more.
I've got a question from Mr. Carter and, and from Missy, that on the funding, just like we talked about for the town, how is that gonna reflect on our budget?
We had the meeting the other night. I believe the architect had a different vision of how the funding would work than what we were thinking. Not saying they were correct or we were correct. We had talked about phasing the project. We had talked about if it's a $60 million project, trying to break it down. And the easy way to do that's $20 million a year We don't know what that first year, that's what we were trying to get to, is that incremental breakdown in fiscal year one, what is the anticipated cost? Fiscal year two?
What is the anticipated cost?
Three, what is the anticipated cost? No sense in putting either 47 or 59 million dollars in next year's budget. Because you're not gonna spend the entire amount in next year's budget. Because you're not gonna spend the entire amount in next year's budget. So there's gotta be, and I, and I'm, I understand that we're wanting to get these things done and get it moving, I get that. But there are some financial components that we agree are going to have to be worked out between now and probably, I would say probably by the end of April, so that we can properly plan in this upcoming cycle for it.
If we could get the bids back, the contractor could give us some estimates.
You need to come.
If we could get the bids back, the contractor could give us some estimates of what he thought would be this year's expenditure, the next year and then.
Pass that on.
If we could get that. So our major goal is to get, get them out for bid. Comes in good, him give us, say the first year's gonna be two-thirds of what, what the money is and the next year's gonna be a third, so whatever, so it's so long. But he could give us them, them numbers if we can get it out for bid.
Still, I don't know what the time lag is between paying a vendor and money coming back or, those are things we have to work out.
And there was a different impression of, of how that worked the other night, so.
April is, Ms. Ham's supposed to make a phone call for us and she's gonna do that sometime, I know she's got us stuff going on too, but she's gonna do that for us and try to figure out exactly how it is, if it's pay as we go, how it works out. We, we both, we all had a different impression on that.
Exactly right.
Architect has dealt with a lot of people, so I figured he would have a good idea, but I don't know that he's in the finance.
And we may wanna reach out to some other counties that's in this now.
And see what they're.
And just talk to their finance people and say, hey, how's this work? How y'all doing it? And get an idea of.
Because if y'all have to front them, that's gonna change everything a lot. It's huge. And I'm hoping that's not the case and for what I've been told, it's not.
What the architect said though, that would be great for you all and us and everybody if that's how it is, but we don't know.
He, he made reference that we did not have to front it up.
Right.
And it's like you guys, until I see that in writing.
It's just right.
It's just talk.
That's right. That's all we're doing right now. Just trying to everybody get on the same page and, and figure out what's going, but like Sid said, calling schools that's in it right now, and that's something we can do and our finance department could probably do, Cindy. Uh, and check with them, but still, it's just talk. So I'm like you, you see it on paper, it's hard to.
This is good talk.
Yes, that's right.
John, any follow-up questions?
None.
Heather? April, you're gonna be heavily involved, any comments?
No, I, I will. I've been emailing my factory and we'll see if we can get something in like a while, how the process is getting through.
Is that Nathan?
No.
Dennis?
But I know in the conversations that I've had with Timmy, he's a carpet maker.
Now the.
We'll try to get some final answers.
The email that you received on the furniture, if you could make a copy available to the other commissioners.
Yeah, I can, I can copy.
Anything else, Ms. Weaver?
I don't think so. Um, we're here to answer any questions that you may have and if, and if something pops up later, please reach out to us. We'll be glad to answer. Um, if we don't have the answer, we'll research and find it and get it to you. Just looking forward to moving and getting this going soon.
I'm looking at meeting with the architect again, maybe next week, if not next week, the following week. Uh, any and all are welcome to attend. Uh, I had some questions and some reservations about some certain stuff and I wanted him to come and make, make me understand it, so, uh, I can let you know when those dates are, if that's something y'all would be interested in.
How's our wrestling team?
Well, we have two that are still in and two that are going into cont season, be wrestling tomorrow for third and fourth place, so we'll be there tomorrow.
I'd love to.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. We have blueprints, do you, the newest ones, you all, would you like to look at or?
These are a smaller version, it's not like that big set that I've got.
Twenty pounds, the other one's forty pounds.
So, thank you all and have a great weekend.
Thank you. Thank you all, have a good. now we move to, uh, county manager comments.
Uh, the first one I wanna, wanna say is, I wanna send out all of our thoughts and prayers to Mary and Darrell Rector. They're going through some challenges with, with their daughter right now and we want them to know that they're in our thoughts. Second one is with Courtney Daniels, who's in our rec department. She also had a, had a health-related emergency the other night, so we wanted to know that we're thinking about her as well. I passed out, uh, the most recent salary study from, uh, the state of North Carolina. It specifically identifies county manager salaries for all counties within the state of North Carolina. As well as the salaries, it talks about the tax valuation, the actual salaries, the hire rate, the travel allowances, the years in the position, et cetera. And I would encourage each of you to look at that. I highlighted specifically those counties with fifteen thousand and less in population so that you could see, uh, true and accurate reflections. The fourth one is, as a result of tonight's meeting, I'd like to congratulate the town on receiving the fifteen million dollars for their upgrade of their wastewater treatment plant. And I know we're all looking forward to being a partner in that. And lastly, with the schools just leaving, um, certainly wanna appreciate them for taking time this afternoon to come in and speak about this project and to bring the, the full board up to an understanding of it and how we progress from here, so thank you.
Start with Greg, any comments, Greg?
Yeah, I do have a comment or two. On, uh, email you sent us on your contract. It ain't no problem with the salary, does it? I'd never seen it before. I mean, I'd, back, where did we vote on this at? It's the first time I'd ever seen it when you emailed it.
Well, the board wants a copy done.
Yeah, yeah, we got a copy of it. Okay, I don't know, I, well, I'm asking, we may have voted on it. When did we vote on it? And I'd never seen the contract before. I'd never seen it. I ain't got. Voted on it, I'd like to see it before I voted on it. If somebody can answer me, I don't know, when did we vote on it?
Put it on the budget.
Did we vote on that contract, cause I'd never seen it.
That was prior to your election.
May 2nd of last year, so I don't think so.
Anything else, Greg?
I just, I'd like somebody to answer that question. I'd never seen it, that's the first time I'd ever seen it, when I got copied on it.
Uh, I think somebody spread it all over the internet. I don't know if that was, I don't know who that was.
April copied me on it, is what I'm trying to say.
Of what?
April copied me on it. I'd never seen it to then. How did we vote on this if I'd never seen it? That's what I'm asking, all I'm asking.
Okay, any other comments?
No.
Okay. John, start with you. All right, I have enough, quite a few comments. Uh, it seems to be a lot going on on Facebook. I very seldom get on Facebook anymore after I got my wrist slapped a couple of years ago. So I really don't know what's going on, but I went on this time, lo and behold, I couldn't get on the sites and all this rigmarole was going on. So I asked people to start sending me, uh, copies of the Facebook pages so that I could, uh, figure out what in the world's going on. One thing I want the public to know, especially since this is being taped and broadcast. We had a work session, what, week, two weeks ago, where we brought in the rescue squad. The rescue squad chief and the assistant chief sat in front of us in a separate table and were able to ask them questions. One of the things that, uh, the county manager asked them was, whenever we were into budget discussions, did I not ask you if the funding that they had proposed was sufficient? And you said yes before you walked out. He, he confirmed that. Now, if I misspeak, my fellow commissioners that were in that work session, please stop me. So, there was some discussion, the chief said, nope, you didn't give me what I wanted. County manager pulled out the request sheets. Lo and behold, the chief admitted he didn't know how to fill out the daggon budget request sheets. But he got every penny that he asked for. Every penny that he asked for and he had an opportunity to ask for more, yet, suddenly it is being spread that we cut his request. It is particularly irksome to me whenever I'm standing up here trying to get a rescue tax. County manager, I came in, I was gonna talk to him, I was gonna request the call sheets. Coming out of the computer was nine-one-one, he already anticipated, he gave it to me. Rescue squad was called out one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven times in 2023. I can give you breakdown by month. Sloughland was at the Christmas dinner, that is the same number that was given at the Christmas dinner when he said we were called out one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven times. They responded, truck or member responses, four hundred and fifty-two times. They went on active standby. Now, active standby, whenever both ambulances leave Allegheny County, they go on active standby in case we need another ambulance. Three hundred and twenty-one times. Seven hundred and sixty-three times, no response by department or members or call was canceled. If we had a volunteer fire department that did not respond fifty percent of the times, we would be all over the daggon place. And now they wanna do less. Now, my knee-jerk reaction is, forget your rescue tax. But who's gonna suffer? There are members that are dedicated, they get out there, they, they show up all the time. They are the four hundred and fifty-two that respond and get in there, do the work and everything else. And we do need a rescue tax because we need, they need a steady stream of income. If they've gotta go borrow money and the bank's gonna look at them and say, well, uh, how much are you gonna be able, what is your income? Well, we hope to raise seventy-five thousand dollars next year selling chicken. Well, hope to raise is not gonna do anything for a banker. He likes certainty. So, I think we need to discuss it, we need to cuss and discuss and I would highly recommend we bring in the rescue tax. But I'm telling you right now, public, especially to the rescue squad members, whenever you started manipulating and twisting, remember Disraeli. Statistics lie and liars use statistics. Let's come out, let's have a discussion. And, uh, whatever, you wanna get on Facebook and start a disparaging and say that we, uh, cut your request so that we could give the county manager a pay raise? Yeah. What you're talking about? Now, the funny thing about this is, all this, there was a discussion at the Republican Party meeting. I'm an independent, I don't go to Republican Party meeting anymore. I was elected to this office as a Republican, but I changed my, to unaffiliated. In there, Timmy related that, uh, he was on the budget, on the budget committee and that we had given them what, what they had requested. His integrity was questioned by a member. Oh, we called him a liar. Guess what we found out during the work session? That member stated he was a member of the board. But at the work session, we were told he was not a member of the board. Am I not correct? So, you wanna embellish, make sure that you can't be caught in it. Also on Facebook, you're questioning how much the commissioners make. I'll show you my W-2 form for 2023. I made less than four thousand four hundred dollars. We are paid three hundred and fifty dollars a month and then we get something whenever we show up to a meeting. We have a work session, we don't get paid for it. When we go to committee meetings, we don't get paid for that. I've got two meetings in Boone a month. I have not requested travel or per diem for any trip that I have made for the county. Because I am fortunate to where I can take it out of my pocket and I don't want the county to pay me. That is my little contribution to the county. You think we make a lot of money? Surprised, didn't you Greg, whenever you, whenever you did get on here?
I think I had thirty-eight hundred dollars last year.
Amount of time that we put into this is quite a bit. Now, I'm the only one that's retired to die. Bobby's got a farm, Michelle's working, Greg's working, Timmy's got a business. That is time out of our personal lives that we are putting into this county and then you haven't gotten, you, you come out and you start slinging the daggon mud. Well, if you're gonna sling it, make sure that you know what you're slinging. Jiminy Christmas. You're upset because the county manager makes some money. Look at the chart. Please keep it in the office. Public, come, come by and look at the chart and look at the population. One thing that you will see where the counties with the population that closely resemble Allegheny County, it is a very close correlation in most cases with what the county manager makes and these other counties, with one exception. They get a car. Or they get a car allowance. He don't get a damn thing. What's your fuel bill a month, if I might ask county manager, if you wouldn't mind telling us? Five, six hundred dollars. So you're going out of pocket six thousand dollars in a year. These counties are giving people cars that up to eight, nine thousand dollars car allowance each, each year. If you're in Allegheny County, you don't know because we don't travel, we don't get out of this daggon county unless you go in the military and see how things are done. But away from here, this is norm. This man has come into this county. We were getting ready to be taken over by the state of North Carolina because our finances were so bad. He knuckled down, got us on the right path and we are in the situation where we are right now. Had your accident last August? August 22nd?
Of twenty-two.
Of twenty-two, August of twenty-two. I was there a few days afterwards when he was in critical care with Jeff Smith. He was doing county business and they were monitoring him, not knowing if he's gonna take another daggon breath. Came back with my wife a few days later. Still, if I remember correct, you were in intensive care at that time. Guess what, he gets a message. For the meritorious service and by keeping breathing, they made him the chair of the Allegheny Community TV. Allegheny Community TV. We don't even know if he's going to be back to work. In his recovery time, he's working the dag gone telephone, answering the questions from the county employees. He does it because he likes his job, he cares for people. You treat him this way. I've got news for you people. That man can say I'm done, I'm going to the house before he gets to the county line, he will have a half a dozen job offers in the state of Virginia, and they'll all pay a good deal more than this county's paying him. I would not have put up with half of what you've put up. And ladies and gentlemen, there's more. But I told that man I would not bring it out until he retired. Because it involved me and him. And that, you're going to hear it, one way or the other, whether I'm in office or not, but you're going to hear it. Don't see what he does. It is easy to stand on the sideline, sidelines and criticize. Little blurb here. General David M. Shoup, General United States Marine Corps. I've, I've read this quite a bit, and it still applies. The galleries are full of critics. They play no ball, they fight no fights, they make no mistakes because they attempt nothing. Down in the arena are the doers. They make mistakes because they, because they try many things. The man who makes no mistakes lacks boldness and the spirit of adventure. He is the one who never tries anything. He is the brake on the wheel of progress. And yet it cannot truly be said he makes no mistakes. Because his biggest mistake is the very fact that he tries nothing, does nothing except criticize those who do things. County commissioners were confronted. We were confronted with, I took it, as a dag gone take it or leave it. We made a decision that we would start assuming the meals for this county. We did it because the bottom line was, we felt that we could do it for less money. When was the last time this county had a tax increase? Yet our budget has gone up. This man watches every dag gone line. Last time we messed with the jail contract, we went up in court. Right now, we are paying less per meal than we were before we went to court. Even after the current provider went up on his prices. Tell you something? Previous contract was pretty dag gone lucrative to somebody, apparently, may not have been. Ever it was brought to our attention that we needed to increase the prices, it was kind of, do it or else you find some, or somebody else, and there ain't nobody else. Kind of ruffled a few feathers, then we started looking at it. We'll watch the bottom line. We'll watch the bottom line. This county is the dag goneest thing I've ever seen. It, it, it goes all the way around on administration. I found out this week. All the community colleges in state of North Carolina are hooked up for their internet providers, providers through NC North Carolina, except for one county. One county! Allegheny. Charge zero. We're paying for it. Wilkes County's going to pay for it. I brought out a lot of stuff in the last six years, seven years. Can't get nowhere. But let me tell you something, whenever you go after a man that has done what this man has done, the man that has sacrificed what this man has sacrificed, the man gets up and comes in here and you criticize him for what he's done, then you get under my dag gone girth. I wouldn't advise you to face me and make criticism. I can tell you real quick, you don't want to go in front of him. Because anybody that ride a damn bull, I ain't going to mess with. Now, I'll get off my dag gone soapbox. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for those good words. Michelle?
Thank you. This has been a really hard week for me. I will be the first one to admit that. I am usually very good about controlling my emotions and overlooking a lot of things. But I will have to tell you that me and some of the other commissioners on this board have been viciously attacked on social media this week. And I don't appreciate it. And that man sitting in that chair right there has been viciously attacked on social media this week. And I especially do not appreciate that. Because I'm going to tell you a little bit of something about what that man has done for us over there. First of the lies on Facebook was that he makes more than any county manager in North Carolina. Exactly. That's what I said. Start with Mecklenburg County, county manager makes over half a million dollars a year. Okay? Surrey County makes $30,000 more a year than this man right here makes. Okay? Let me tell you what he's done, though, for that meager $130,000 that he makes and drives over here a couple of hours one way each day. I'm just going to say that when he arrived on the scene, this county was in deep dew. Let me just tell you. We were at 11% fund balance. The state requires a 20%. He took us from 11% fund balance to 63% fund balance and got us out of the ditch in the few short years that he's been here. We have one of the healthiest financial stances for a, for a county our size in the state of North Carolina. Not only did he do that, he did it when a natural disaster that has never happened before struck us, the earthquake. He was forced to take action immediately to damage government infrastructure. He was able to get and mobilize the forces that be to come up here and find housing for people who had been displaced. Look at 90 South Main. Look at our historic courthouse that's getting ready to be redone. This man right here is an expert on RFPs, RFQs, he has tons of network contacts, and he knows how to handle a building project. That man right there will squeeze every penny that there is, and he wants an accounting for every penny that is spent like it is his own money out of his own pocket. And I for one appreciate that. Because that falls back on me and all of us. So, thank you for doing that. You rarely get a thank you, but I want to say thank you tonight. He has over 30 years of leadership experience in county government. And let me tell you, as an HR professional, you pay for that. That's really not a lot of money that he's making considering the scope that he has to manage, as well as the projects that he has done here. You, you reward employees. April will tell you, you reward your employees and encourage them to stay by giving them more money as a thank you. And that's what we have done because for the little bit of money, that $130,000 salary that he makes, I guarantee you, he has saved this county hundreds of thousands of dollars. I can promise you that. Okay? It may even be up to a million dollars. Okay, the next myth is that his work hours. I'm hearing this baloney going around that he only works four days a week. You know what? He comes into the office four days a week, but I'm going to tell you, he works a heck of a lot more than those four days. And those four days that he's here, I can promise you that he puts in at least 10 to 12 hours a day to work. He works on the weekends. I don't know about y'all, but I've gotten midnight emails from him. He's working all the time. Now, just like John pointed out, he doesn't get a dime of gas money to drive over here every day. Okay? But he, he comes over here four days a week. I don't see anything wrong with him staying home on one day a week to save his money because we don't reward him for that. We don't reimburse him for that. But he is at home working. I can promise you, he's not sitting at home drinking a fruity drink by the gazebo. Correct? Afraid not, right? You know what? The four day work week is just, it's hilarious to me. In my organization where I work at, there's a lot of people that work three and four day work weeks. They work remotely from home. That's the new norm in our society now. So, get over at Allegheny County. You know, and I'm sure that there are probably some in county government that work four day weeks too. If they're able to, some you're not. My job, I'm not able to. I have to work every day, I have to be available to people, and I understand that that's part of the scope of my job. April can relate to that. If you're in HR, you're there. Okay? So, Mr. Carter doesn't live in this county. That's no secret. He's never made that a secret from day one. Why does he have to live in this county? Mr. Carter lives in Smith County, Virginia. He's built his life there. He's a farmer, he's a husband, and he's a father. That's his sacred ground. Just like on Pine Swamp Road, that's where my sacred ground is. But I feel like that you don't have to necessarily live in the county that you work in. I'm grateful to him that he'll drive over here every day to work. I actually think there's a few benefits of not living in this county. He doesn't know, know anybody or owe anybody. It makes him totally impartial by living in a different county. Now, he loves this county. I can attest to that. I see him coming over here every time we have the Veterans Celebration on a Saturday, he brings his wife. He's come over here on Saturdays to do business. Looking at pool grounds, looking at different things. Mr. Carter is invested in our well-being and growth. But we want to slay him on social media. I do not understand that. And it, quite frankly, it offends the heck out of me. Now, let's finally address these secret meetings in the contract, okay? Ridiculousnesses. This is calling into question almost every person on this Board of Commissioners. Okay? It's calling, it's calling us out as being liars, chiefs, cheats and thieves. I don't take that lightly. You know, we do have closed sessions. There's a reason for that, and there's a general statute put in place for us to have closed sessions. Now, some things don't need to be coming out in the public in closed sessions. We deal with sensitive personnel issues that you wouldn't want known, that could hurt you personally in the standing of the community. We have never taken a vote in closed session. We always come out of closed session. Now, this contract they're talking about, that Greg just asked about, okay? We discussed it in closed session. Yes, we did. We discussed it. But it was not sneaked in. It was voted on in open session when we had the budget vote. There's the answer to your question, and you also voted on it.
Okay, that's what I want to know. When did I vote on it?
Michelle's got the floor. You're out of order. Michelle, finish.
Thank you. Now, this was not done on the fly, given him, you know, he didn't come and say, oh, I need a raise. We gave every single county employee a raise this year. How many counties can say that they did that? It's because that man sitting right there was able to make it happen because he was able to pinch some pennies and make it happen. Now, we did our research. We got on Glassdoor, we got on ZipRecruiter, we looked at all the county managers, we looked right here, at all the county managers' wages. We gave him a fair wage. And I will go to my grave defending that. Now, the bottom line is this, we have a very experienced, tenured and knowledgeable county manager who's taken us through many crisis situations. If I agree with him on everything, no. Does he agree with me on everything? No. That's okay. We can agree to disagree. But I promise you that I trust that man right there, and I trust that he has our best interests in mind at all times for this county. Now, I got, I want to go back to my original statement. I have been mercilessly attacked on social media this week by keyboard warriors. Nobody has had enough gumption to come to my face and talk to me face to face about it. Or by phone. We've been called liars, crooked politicians, operating in secret, cheaters. I would like for you to look at the intentions of every single candidate that is running this year. Just look at the intentions. There's one candidate in particular that has a huge grudge to get into office and fire that man right there that has done all that stuff that I just named, that he has done for this county and more. I do what I do because I love this county. I assure you, I have zero, zero ulterior motives for sitting on this board, other than to see Allegheny grow and prosper. I want, this is my forever home, this is my sacred ground. I'll be here till I'm dead. And I want to be a part of leaving it a better place than I found it. That's why I sit in this chair. It's got to be better. We've got to do better. I have no financial gain at stake, and quite honestly, if I didn't do this, I would have a heck of a lot more time with my farm, with my job, with my loved ones. I do this because I love this county. And I have operated honestly in this seat. I have no secrets, I have no crooked dealings, and you can say a lot of things about me, but don't you dare question my integrity or my heart, or I will come at you. That's all I got to say.
Well said, madam.
Thank you. Those are great words. I have a few comments, and I will, I will start with this contract. As the commissioner, as the chairman of the board, when we started into our budget, we have to consider everything, and that includes some, all of the salaries. On March the 6th, I talked to Greg personally, privately with April, and we talked about the package that we were considering offering to Michael. Greg's word is very good. That is a range of 15,000 to 20,000. He was happy with the contract. Also, on, March the 3rd, talked to Michelle. March 3rd, talked to John, went over the same information with each commissioner, and I purposely had April there so there would be no questions about the contract, that one person heard one thing and another person heard another thing. We also talked about this, our total budget at a retreat. There's never a word brought up by Greg or any other commissioner questioning that contract. That contract is public knowledge, most of it. Some things can be- Some things can be redacted. Ob doesn't want his social security number published every place in the county on social media. I don't want mine. There's certain things that cannot be published personally, out in the open. I had a slight problem with that contract. I wanted Michael to have more money. He said no. He was happy with that range. And that's the range that this board went through in the budget process and approved. Now, that's enough about this contract that some people relish putting on the internet. Yes, I've got more gray hair than most people. I've never known this county to stoop to this mudslinging that is being thrown out specifically by one candidate that is running for commissioner. It's disgusting. It's vile and it's unnecessary. I look at some of our people that pay taxes. Another before she passed away last year lived on fixed income. It was paramount that she pay her taxes on time. We had one commissioner that is running this year that miraculously paid his taxes, finished paying his taxes this past Monday. I appreciate that person paying, paying up on his late taxes. I look around at some of the problems this county's had lately. We had our jail a few weeks ago. The heating system went out on both sides, federal prisoners and state prisoners. Well, we feed those people. Three meals a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We have a local contract that this county has lived up to every day. During that time period, there were sixteen days that those prisoners were at different locations. Our vendor was paid nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for doing absolutely nothing. He did not deliver a meal. He did not cook a meal. But our contract called for him to be paid a minimum of twenty-five meals per day we lived up to our contract. I did some quick figuring and I came up roughly. That vendor is paid at a minimum two hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, give or take a few cents every year as a minimum, whether we have one prisoner or twenty-five prisoners. He still gets paid for those twenty-five. That goes over that, he's paid an additional fee. Most people that we deal with in the county are vendors. Either solid waste fees on time. This one person owes this county one thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars in back fees for solid waste. I think that is wrong. Somebody that's getting paid that much money surely can afford to pay their bills to the county. A mudslinging is disgusting. It's unnecessary. I think we've even gotten people on the internet that have created false Facebook names. Fred Wilhelm. I don't, I've never heard of this person in this county. But he seems to be able to sling a lot of mud. But I think like John and Michelle said, if you've got a problem with the county, come speak to us personally. Don't be a coward. Don't hide behind somebody else's words. I look at what Michael's done and John and Michelle hit on the highlights. One thing I'd like to talk about is the morale in this county of our county employees. When Michael came and we were in dire needs by the state treasurer was ready to, they had the capability of taking us over. Our morale was probably at an all-time low. We had a lot of turnover in our employees. In about eight or ten months or so, this was a different place to work. People had a smile on their face. They were happy to come here. Couple of years after that, Michael started getting these raises to these employees. Our turnover quit or slowed down drastically. I think the sheriff's office always has a turnover. DSS, one of the hardest jobs I think in this country is working at DSS. They do have some turnover, but they work under terrible conditions sometimes. It's, uh, it's a shame that people criticize somebody that their contract gives them the option to work four days a week. It doesn't say he has to work, that he cannot come in on Wednesday. It wasn't two or three weeks ago, I got called to the office. There was a sheriff deputy. There sits Michael on a Wednesday. We had to solve a problem. That's a Wednesday. That's a day off. No, Michael was sitting in the office doing business. It was an emergency. He was here all day. Like Michelle said, we get emails from him, eight, nine. I don't get many after ten, I'm in bed. But I know he sends them. And I appreciate that. Michael's a straight shooter. Anybody who says he's not, I'll tell them right now, they're a liar. I'm not gonna say they misquoted or misunderstood. They're a flat-out liar. He deals one way, straight up. There's not many people left in this world that deal that way. Four-day a work week doesn't make a hill of beans to me. Upwork in, in this county doesn't make a hill of beans to me. There's people that go to Winston every day. They don't work here. Michael comes here because he, he really enjoyed Allegheny County. And he pulled us out of some terrible situations. He does more. I'm not gonna say he takes away Heather's legal work, but he does so much stuff legal, legal-wise, writing RFPs, RFQs that, that Heather just has to look at them and make a little change here, if any, and just checks off on them. We have never had a professional, professional county manager in this county before. And I've known a lot of them. Michael is that consummate professional. He knows state law. He knows federal law. One of the biggest things that people don't realize is background in chemistry. He's saved us so much at the transfer facility or trash dump. And we've got a big problem that we're gonna have to address in this next budget. He's already got it figured out. We just gotta figure out how to pay for it. He doesn't think five minutes ahead, five days ahead. He's thinking years ahead. John talked about, Michelle talked about it, how tight he is with money. Well, I've sat in on the budget committee. This will be the third year. If I had a Bible, I'd have my hand on it right now. He was talking about a five-dollar charge at Charlotte Airport or it might have been Raleigh, uh, Greensboro Airport that we were having to pay through Allegheny Motion while they were waiting to pick up somebody. Five dollars. He's a man that's got a budget of millions and he's talking about, how are we gonna stop wasting this five dollars? I can't say enough about him. But I sure as heck can say a lot about these gutless wonders that get on the internet and say whatever they want to say. And please, people, check your facts. These people that get on the internet have no damn idea what they're talking about. And I challenge them, I challenge any of these commissioners. If you've got a problem with me, come to me and talk to me like a man. Don't be some sniveling little kid out here running around. Talk to me face to face. With that being said, April, you got any comments? Heather, any comments? Michael? With that being said, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Well said, Mr. Chair.
I don't know who to ask a question to. But am I correct in understanding that Michael's contract was never voted on separately apart from the budget? And I'm saying he should have been. I'm just, I've never. Am I correct in understanding?